Welcome, everybody, to the town hall meeting. I hold these meetings every Wednesday evening at five o'clock Pacific time. So that I can keep parents up to date on social distancing programs and what the ever-changing situation is with the Congress coming down with the guidelines or not the guidelines, unclear guidelines, and what's happening across the nation with different districts, different schools, different parents' experiences. And just to let you know what your parent rights are and what you could, should expect in your child's distance learning plan. And so that you really know how to protect your rights, so that your child actually receives an education during this time of school closure. Because Rights Law did a survey, and in that survey, they found out that eighty percent of children across the nation are not receiving an equitable distance learning plan and are not receiving an education. Most of those kids don't have instruction. They're not receiving support from their teachers. Parents are just kind of getting thrown at them, a bunch of information, of links to go to, websites to go to, and having, putting all the burden on the parent to teach their child without the support they need to do so. So that's really pretty prevalent across the nation. In terms of my clients, I, all of my clients are experiencing the same thing, except for one that I just talked to today. And he is actually, that child is actually receiving an equitable distance learning plan. I just about fell off my chair when the dad told me this. But then I found out why, because this student is in all honors classes. So he's, you know, twice exceptional. And so he, because of that, that's told me right there what the reason why he's receiving services and he's receiving, teachers are supporting him. He has Zoom classrooms where the teachers are actually teaching instruction. He's receiving new information, new teaching, on, working on goals. They're implementing the IEP, which is what every student should be receiving. And that's because he's in honors classes. So those teachers are highly motivated to teach their kids and to continue their classes, those kids learning and receiving new information and new concepts. So that's why. And all my other kids are not receiving the, these kinds of services and academic instruction. So, so the first thing, what I'm gonna really focus on tonight is, first of all, your IEP meeting for the end of the year, and then also preparing for compensatory education and how you can set yourself up to have a good, solid legal evidence and case to win compensatory services for your district to award you that when you come back next school year, because there are specific things that parents really need to do for you to, you know, have a good, strong case, so you don't have to do a lot of arguing. So I want to focus on those two things and have a conversation with Peter on his take on, on those things as well. So, so the first thing I want to just reiterate, I've been talking about this on all my town halls, and I also did on my webinar last Monday, just, you know, while I'm on that subject. I'm, I'm presenting webinars where I actually have slides, and I'm going through these things with slides and teaching much more in-depth on all of this. And the next webinar is going to be this Friday, and it's going to be at twelve o'clock, Friday the fifteenth, at twelve o'clock. It's posted on my Facebook page, and then I'm going to be doing another one on Tuesday, at, Tuesday the nineteenth, at four o'clock, and this is both Pacific time. So I invite you all to come to that, and, and I'll be, you know, as I said, going much slower and more in-depth. And parents can send me in their questions if they have. And by the way, if you have questions, please post it in the, the chat. So at the bottom of the Zoom, you'll see a bar, and there'll be a chat box. And if you click on that, a little box will come up, and you can type in questions. And then as we're going through it, or maybe at the end, it'll just depend on how our conversation goes with Peter. We can look at that, and I can try to get to your questions, specific questions you might have regarding anything that we're talking about this evening. So the first thing I want to say is Secretary DeVos, she ruled that there are no waivers to IDEA. So no matter what you hear, parents, nothing has changed. The law is still the same. IDEA is still in effect, full effect. Nothing has changed. Nothing was waived. So that means your child should be receiving their IEP. And so that means that the district is required to somehow innovatively, creatively work with you to figure out how they can deliver to your child their IEP. So, you know, and, and of course, virtually is the first step that we go to, because we still have social distancing. And there would, there should be no reason why the IEP can't be implemented virtually, because they're doing it. Their private schools are doing it, non-public schools are doing it, and they're doing it very well. They, I mean, I hear of private schools where kids are on, and they have their classes, just like they have their regular classes when they go to school. And the teachers get on, they teach the class, they, they give the assignments, they talk to the parents, and they say, "Parents, what do you need? What support do you need?" They have, they, they're providing aides that, that are supporting the child still. They're providing ABA still, virtually. They're doing everything virtually, speech and language pathology is, is, is happening. So there's no reason why. And so when the district tells you, "Oh, no, you know, we have to do things differently now, and some of these things just aren't able to be done, and it's not, your IEP is not going to look the same now anymore, because we're in this situation." Well, of course, it's not going to look the same. It's going to be virtually. But that doesn't mean you shouldn't still be receiving your IEP in some form, okay? So now, in terms of having someone come to your home, some ABA providers and some providers through their health, what's it called? Health, what is it, Peter? Health something? How they're doing that with the, with the services, with health something or other. I can't remember. I can't think of it right now. It'll come to me.
Telehealth.
Yeah, yes, that's it. So.
Which is that? I didn't hear that.
Telehealth.
Oh, telehealth, yeah, okay.
Thanks, Bonnie. Telehealth. They are, some private, non-public agencies are saying, "Well, come to your home." If you, if the parent's comfortable with having someone come into the home. Non-public agencies are offering that, and I do know of AB agencies going to the home to provide the services while the student is on the, virtually receiving instruction. And so that is happening. If it's, if parents aren't comfortable with that, or if the agency isn't providing in-home services, then you should still be getting it virtually. So I just want to make that really clear, because parents are still, you know, saying, "Well, the district's telling me they can't do it now," or "It's not possible now," or, you know, that, for whatever reason, that, that the district's coming up with to say that they can't provide it. But it, if that is happening, it's a violation of non-implementation of your IEP, plain and simple. That's what it is. So, you know, of course, of course, the first two weeks, you know, if you went and tried to file a compliance complaint in the first two weeks that you didn't get it, it might not be very strong, because they did give some leeway till everyone got, you know, got it together and figured out how to get on virtually. But, but now we're into eight weeks, and, and absolutely, it should be going on right now. And, and so, you know, parents, you should be, I've talked about documentation before. So documentation is so, so vital right now for you to be taking a form of a journal or a log or whatever you're most comfortable with, and you're writing down every day, what service did your child receive or not receive? That's in your IEP. So if you're supposed to get speech and language twice a week for thirty minutes, and you're not getting it, then you should be writing that down. This week, I got no speech and language. This week, I got one session of speech and language. And you should be keeping a log of how many sessions you're missing. That's for all services. For, for your goals and objectives. Who's working on them? When are they working on them? How are the goals and objectives being embedded into what they're doing? So if you're receiving, you know, a big list of websites and links to go to, how do those relate to your child's individual goals? So when are they working on goals and objectives? How is your child's behavior? Are they, are they now transitioned to being pretty, you know, compliant with, with getting their education virtually, or are they not? Are they able to access the online schooling, or are they not? You should be documenting that every day. My child's behavior today was whatever it was, you know? And then there's going to be some days where you're not going to do anything, because you, you know, weren't able to, because you were overwhelmed, or your child wasn't able to, because they were escalating in anxiety or behaviors. And that's perfectly fine. So you just document that. Today, sorry, nothing got done, you know? And they expect that. That, that's not unusual. The fact that you're documenting it is actually going to cover you to, for them to turn around and say, "Well, Mom, you didn't do this," or "You didn't do that." And so, because you have your log of the days that, that things did happen, that your child did do whatever they did, or you received whatever you received, and then there's the days that are going to be bad days, okay? So documenting is key, because that's what you're going to use when you go back next year, and we look at compensatory education or compensatory services. Because whatever they missed and whatever regression your child was experienced during this time, that they're going to have to look at that, the present levels that they, that your child had prior to shutdown, and the present levels they have coming back to school, and whatever that gap is, that's what they're going to have to make up for, for your child. So Peter, do you have any input on any of those things that we could hear from you?
I guess a couple of things. One of them is, another important thing to remember is, is this stuff that they're doing actually any good? Is it working? Doesn't matter if it's in the IEP. If it's, if it's not working, if it sucks, it's worse than nothing. I have a kid today, now that the district is effectively not doing anything for the kid, he's doing a whole lot better. Because what they were doing for him before is putting him through all kinds of changes, sitting him down in what they called a sensory break chair, which in fact was nothing of the kind. It was just secluding the kid because they didn't like his behavior. Well, his behavior is a whole lot better now that he's at home. They're not riding his ass. So this is important for us to remember. You can't forget, if it's not doing any good, it's worse than nothing. And you, you have to evaluate that. Just because it's in the IEP doesn't mean it's any good. And what you can do certainly is, if they're not doing what's in the IEP, if it's good for nothing, okay, you remember that it's good for nothing, and you don't want more of that good-for-nothing stuff. You cash it for something else.
Absolutely. Yes. And that's one of the good things that's going to come out of this. It's because, parents, you're going to be able to see, "Oh, my gosh, this doesn't work for my kid." So when you go back to your IEP meeting, you can say, "This needs to be changed, because this doesn't work, and we need to figure out something that does." And, and it's also, it's a way for you to take, it's a temperature gauge for parents to take on their child's IEP services. And, and you might see a big gap where, "Wow, we don't even have this goal, and, and my child has a huge gap in this area. We need to write a goal in that area." Or whatever it may be. So it's actually giving parents a great opportunity to actually get a really in-depth look at the IEP and what's actually in it, and how your child is responding to it. Is there anything, any other comments, Peter?
Well, I'll give an example. Kid's getting speech and language. He's been getting speech and language for the past year, and nothing much is happening. Did they even look to see if the kid has an auditory processing problem? So there's no way that speech and language is ever going to work. And the same thing, they're, they're, they, they don't like his behavior. They don't like how he's antsy and jumpy. And they say he has ADHD, and if he has a visual processing problem, so they're just tortured to look at stuff. And he can't read, because he can't properly look at what he's reading. Something needs to be done about that. And these people are perfectly consent, content to cover their asses, saying, "Well, you know, we're providing these services. You're working on these goals." And they make sure that the goals are timid enough, so that even a cabbage is going to make them. And it doesn't mean that the kid is actually getting anything that really means much. I'm, I'm not that interested in goals, because they can devise goals and everything, and just because you've devised a goal doesn't necessarily mean it's going to happen. I mean, they can, they can, they can specify a goal that everybody's going to have personal protective equipment in all the hospitals, but just because they enunciate that goal doesn't mean it's going to happen. You kind of want to know, "Well, how is it going to happen?" And so just writing a goal doesn't mean the thing's going to happen, when they don't know why the kid's having the problem. And when it doesn't work, they're going to blame you, and they're going to blame the kid.
Yeah, I, I absolutely agree. And, and I think the problem comes in there is that if you don't have, if you don't have really accurate present levels of performance, then they're writing inaccurate goals anyways.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And, and most of the time, they don't have accurate present levels of performance, because it was a district psychologist that did this psychopath assessment, and the child didn't, you know, bond with that person, because they just pulled him out of class one day, and the kid never saw him before, and didn't perform for them. So it's, does it not reflective of their true cognitive or abilities? And, and so then goals are written improperly, and then we wonder why kids aren't progressing. So, so assessment is, is key, like Peter said. And, and most parents don't even know that they can ask for an auditory processing or a vision processing assessment, because most kids, they're most likely have weaknesses in one or both of those areas, and which, which severely impairs their ability to learn. And, you know, most neurological disabilities, they overlap each other, and that's how, that's, you know, the neurological, the visual, the, the auditory, the sensory, it's all overlapping. So if, parents, if you don't ask for these kinds of assessments, sensory integration disorder, a sensory assessment, not just a fine motor OT assessment, where they determine, "Oh, they're not holding the pencil properly, and the OT is going to work with them to hold the pencil properly." Well, if the child has sensory integration disorder, it's not going to do any good to hold the pencil properly. So, and, and a lot of times, OT assessments don't even look at sensory integration. They'll just, they'll just have a little blurb of, "The OT determined that, an observation that they didn't see any kind of sensory integration, sensory issues going on." That's not a full assessment. That's not a full and complete occupational therapy assessment. So when, when we do OT, I always say, "I want sensory integration included. I want the whole SIP done, and I want it done by a SIP-certified occupational therapist." And usually I get an IEE anyway, because that's when you're really going to get the truth, is when you get.
I have never seen a good OT assessment from a school district, ever. I've seen decent speech and language assessments. Sometimes I've seen decent psych assessments. Pretty often, I'll see a good AT assessment. Never have I seen a good OT assessment, and that's because they don't want to do them. Usually, they come right out and say in front, "Well, we're only looking at what the kid does in school. We're not looking at anything else." The law be damned, which says you're supposed to assess the kid comprehensively, and they make a point of not assessing the kid properly, so that they don't have to do anything about it. So they want to torture the kid about his behavior and stuff, and these sensory problems are in fact torturing the kid, and they don't want to do anything about it. It's the same way, I've seen, this kid is such a bad shape. This is in Palm Springs. It was desert sands, as I remember. This kid was in such bad shape, the kid could hardly function at all, as far as actually taking anything in, as far as actually paying any attention to anything, because the kid was a disastrous sensory mess. So the OT looked at the kid and said, "Well, the kid doesn't need OT, because the kid's able to get around in the classroom." They knew perfectly well that the kid was a disaster, but they didn't bother looking. Now, the same district, of course, uses another trick you see all the time. They go and they assess the kid's cognitive abilities and whatnot by having the kid look at things, and, you know, diagrams or print or whatever it is, having them, having the kid look at things. And, and then they'll also have the kid, they'll ask the kid questions, which the kid can't understand, because of his auditory processing things. He can't, he can't get any kind of an accurate understanding of things, because they're relying on his visual processing to be able to understand what he's looking at and so forth. So the kid ends up looking like a turnip. And then they say, "Well, the kid's a turnip, so we don't need to do anything about his auditory and visual processing stuff, because, you know, that just goes along with his turnip status." Well, the reason he looks like a turnip is the stuff that, in fact, is preventing him from being able to do things decently, and they use that to say, "We don't have to do anything about it."
Yes.
They're that way. That's how outrageous they are.
Yes, yes. And then they identify him as ID, and when, when they're not. I've, I've had so many districts, or districts, psychs say that the child was ID when the child was not in fact ID at all. And the IEE comes out fifteen, twenty points higher than the psych at the school district determined. Yeah.
I tell them once in a while, here was Helen Keller. They said how she was a, you know, she was a rutabaga and stuff. And once she actually got some help, since she couldn't see and she couldn't hear, turned out whatever else you think of her, she was definitely a rutabaga. She was a pretty smart girl, right? So here it was, a hundred years ago, and they've learned nothing and forgotten nothing in a hundred years.
Absolutely agreed. And, and, and it's so, such an injustice that even these kids with autism that are non-verbal, many of them are highly intelligent. And once you finally get them a communication device, and they start typing, you, this genius comes out, and you realize how intelligent they are. Yet they fight the facilitated communication, because they say it's not, you know, research-based yet. And that's how they opens up their whole world to them, because then they, they have a form of communication. And they don't want to deal with the prologue to go, the little baby stuff, because they're so much more highly intelligent than that, that they just go, they, they have behaviors like, "Get that thing out of here. You know, I'm not going to do that." And then when they learn facilitated communication, everything changes. So there's just, yeah. So many components that parents, assessment is key. And the only way you're going to get the true and accurate information and, and standardized test scores and recommendations, proper recommendations, is to get an independent educational evaluation from a private provider.
And then you have to be very careful on that, who you pick. The same way that when you go to get your car fixed, you don't just drive down the street and say, "Oh, that guy has a pretty sign, so I think I'll go take my car in there." Well, your kid's more important than your car. So you have to be very careful. Usually, the people they put on their list are no good. There are exceptions, but usually they're no good. And getting an IEE, which the district steers you into from some, some shill to the district, you're worse off than if you got nothing, because what are you going to do? You're going to argue with the IEE? Well, you picked them. What's your problem? So now you're just really, you're really in trouble. If you got to argue with your independent assessor, it's bad enough you got to deal with the district. So it's a disaster to get the wrong IEE. So what will happen is the district will say, "Sure, we'll fund an IEE," and then they'll do everything to make sure that you don't get it from the right person, and there's where you have to fight them.
Yes, absolutely. So, yeah, you, you have to get a referral. You need to call an advocate or attorney and ask, "Who is the most reputable OT I can go to in my area?" And you get names, you get referrals, and that's who you go to. You don't, you know, that person may or might, may not be on the district list. But, you know, you don't just kind of close your eyes and go, "Oop, I think I'll pick that one." Because that, as Peter said, it's going to be a big waste of your time, and, and they're just going to come back and mirror the same thing that the district said, because that's what they do. Because most of those people on that list are in the district's pocket, because the district is promoting them to do their assessments. So you, you can't trust that list. You know, like I said, the majority of the service providers I work with for past ten, fifteen years, they're on the list. But how are you going to know who's the best ones on the list? You're not. So definitely get advice on.
Just go with Pearlman.
I'm sorry?
They just go with Dr. Pearlman. He's the best of the best. I love him.
Yeah, Dr. Pearlman's awesome. I use Dr. Pearlman, Dr. Perry Pizarro, and Chris Davidson are my three go-to psychs that I go to. Pearlman's in neuropsych, though, and he, yeah, he's very, very renowned in his field, and he's awesome.
Comment, just look at the visual processing stuff, for sure. And there aren't many of those that are any good. There's Doug Steffi, and there's Carl Hillier down in, I think he's in Oceanside. He might be in Solana Beach, one of those places down there. He's really good. And actually, Katie Elton over in Temecula is not bad, and she's learning. It's, it's really good. She's learning, and she's humble, so. So those three are pretty good. Most of the others aren't. And one of the reasons we have a lot of trouble getting vision therapy from districts is because they have experience. You, you go to Ketchum or Southern California College of Optometry or one of those places, and you get an assessment from them. They don't look at any of the stuff you got to look at. They don't look at primitive reflexes. They don't look to see if the kid has timing clock problems, using interactive metronome or something like that. There's a lot of things they don't look at. So then they will go ahead and they do stuff, and then it really doesn't work. They spend a lot of money, and it doesn't really work, because they're not taking care of the underlying stuff that has to be taken care of. And then the next time you go, you know, the district says, "Look, you know, I spent seventy-five hundred dollars on that last kid, and we didn't get anywhere. I don't want to spend any more." And, and who can blame them for that? Blame them for a lot of things. I don't blame them for just, you know, resenting having their money pissed away. So it's really essential, when you get, you know, when you get somebody, that you get somebody who's going to do it right. And that's not easy to do. Somebody mentioned auditory processing down there. Well, I got an answer for you. If the, if the kid really can't understand what you're saying to them, it's not going to take long before they're not paying attention anymore. I mean, you sit in the room, and you can't really understand what people are saying, because things are muffled or anything. You're not going to pay attention to that conversation for very long. And if you have to pay attention to it, it will exhaust you, and you'll get fed up, and pretty soon you're going to start behaving badly. So if you're taking somebody, and you knock the higher order digit off their age and look at that person, they're not going to behave too well either, when you subject them to that all day long. So auditory processing absolutely has to be taken care. They'll take a kid with an auditory processing problem, and they'll say, "He looks like ADHD. He has ADHD." Anytime somebody has an attention problem, they say ADHD, when there isn't any reason to say so. They don't check nutritional things. They don't check auditory processing. They don't check visual processing. You think a kid's going to pay a lot of attention to something he's reading if he gets a frontal headache after five minutes of trying? So, and, and if the kid has sensory problems, and that drives him nuts, or he's the kind of kid that's sensitive to things, so that he sees the flicker and the fluorescent lights in the classroom, that kid's supposed to pay attention to things, and then the kid has these kinds of problems, and they want to drug them.
Yeah, yeah. Which is why they do what they do. They flap, or they scream, or they have a behavior, or they stomp, or they whatever. That because these sensory things are bombarding them, and they can't, you know, modulate their sensory system. So there's all these reasons. And, and the, the district knows this. The school, now, your teachers might not necessarily know this, but the school district administrators do. And so, yeah, assessment is key, and that's, that's the basis. It's the foundation. If you don't, if your child isn't appropriately identified, and there's areas of deficit, and then by a specialist who specializes in, in that area and is well-renowned, and, and provides you with the appropriate recommendations in their report, that's when you're going to start to develop the IEP and get the services that your child needs. So in looking at the chat, there's a lot of questions about different things that aren't happening right now. So, so what I want to say about that is, you know, I would, I don't know what, if you're, if you're in California, we still have some time before the end of the school year. So calling an IEP meeting and getting it documented in your IEP that what things did happen, what things didn't happen, and preparing for a contingency plan for next year. Because if, we're not going to go back in September, you guys. There's no way. Because we're going to still be social distancing in September. So how are they going to open school sites and get kids to social distance? Now, you know, some schools are saying, "Oh, we're going to have, split up the schedule, and we'll, we'll split the population, and half the kids will go for two days, and the other half will go for the other two days, and we'll still do half virtual." If they try that, okay, they might do that for September, but they know we're going to have another outbreak in October or November when flu season comes up, and they're going to shut right back down again. So you, we know that the future, at least for the first trimester, is going to be virtual schooling. So if you have a crappy virtual distance plan now, you're going to have a crappy one for the first quarter of the next school year. If you don't have an IEP meeting and say, "I want to get a strong..." If you don't have an I E P meeting and say, I want to get a strong virtual distance plan or distance learning plan written in my I E P now, then, and, and ask them, how are you going to provide my speech and language? How are you going to provide my OT? I'm not getting it. And document, bring your log in and say, this is what I, what I didn't get. Tell them all of your findings that you found out about your child regarding the services they did get or things you saw regarding what's in the I E P now. Make your requests known, have it documented and ask now for an academic achievement test to be provided so that when you get back to school, they'll already have been working on it so that you can, so that's not delayed. Because you need to get standardized scores for the academic achievement tests in all present levels of performance so that you can know how to compare to see what the gap of compensatory services might be. If you wait, you're going to be 75 days in if you wait till, you know, and who not be more than that, because they might not get to your I E P for a month or two or three after they come back. Because they're going to have thousands of I E P meetings to make up for what they didn't do during this time. So who knows when you're going to get your I E P? So, you know, I think that's the wisest thing to do is get your I E P meeting in. If you didn't, if you had an annual coming up, a triennial coming up or a transition scheduled, then you have the right to have that. They can't deny you that. They, I know my local school district where most of my clients are, they still haven't had one virtual I E P meeting. Now, they, they just scheduled the first one today. And, and I've got about 20 that are supposed to be happening. So it's, it is a violation. They're supposed, they're late on every annual, they're late on all these meetings, they're still late. They're late. That's all there is to it, that, you know, I D A is in effect. So, you know, you, you have the right for two, your annual, your transition, whatever it may be, if it was, it was, if it was scheduled to happen and you have a due date for an I E P coming up, that's supposed to happen. And they can't deny you that. Okay? It, that, that's a violation for a compliance complaint. So are all these other things. And so that's my take on that. What, what about you, Peter?
Well, for one thing, they did, some stuff is federal and they can't do anything about it. But some deadlines, some timelines are state timelines and they can't change those. And they, they passed this thing and I haven't looked at it, so I don't know what they changed in detail, but I know that some of those timelines in ed code 56043, like when they got to kick you an assessment plan and a bunch of other things like that, they relaxed them. I don't know how much they relaxed them.
Just assessment, just for assessment though. Those are the only timelines.
They've done, they certainly relaxed some stuff like that and I haven't seen particularly what. Uh, also, I don't trust C D E to discipline them particularly rigorously for doing the wrong thing if they figure, well, oh, they start whining, well, they got so many I E meetings, they just can't get it done. So I got a couple of things to say about that. One of them is, there's a lot you can get done outside of the I E P meeting. And you should, if you, if you possibly can. For one thing, if you want changes to the I E P, there isn't any reason that you can't have an amendment in agree and writing without a meeting to, to amend stuff if it needs to be done. That's one thing. Uh, the other thing is that you're entitled to stuff under section 504 and the A D A. And you should use that route as much as possible because they can put you through months of idea hoop jumping if you let them. And many times you can make them do it right now under section 504 or under the A D A. And, and then that's a better way to go. Now, to see how the relationship works between them, um, the Office for Civil Rights, which I must say is not enforcing things as they should, and the Justice Department put out a really nice thing on November 12th, 2014. They put out a lot of good stuff in that particular day, but it talks all about the relationship between I D A and section 504 and the A D A. And they have all sorts, they have a frequently asked questions thing and they had a sort of a cover sheet, so to speak. You should look that up and study it. Instead of, you know, instead of turning on Netflix, go ahead and read those docs, you'll like them. And basically, they can't, if, if the kid is entitled to something under section 504 and pretty much, the kid is pretty much entitled to anything under section 504 that they're entitled to under I D A. That's what you want to pursue. They can't say if the kid needs an accommodation under section 504 or if he needs special ed and related services under 504, which they're entitled to, not just accommodations, then you go ahead and you press for that. And if they say, oh, well, we're going to have a meeting and talk about it, you know, maybe six months or stuff, we'll find, uh-uh, they can't do that. Uh, in fact, one of the frequently asked questions in there specifically addresses that, says, no, you got to do it right now. You can't use I D A blather to, to stall. So that's something you want to keep in mind because they're great at delay and deny. They're better at that than anything else that I know of. And, and then one way that you can prevent that is by using those other statutes. You should learn them. If you stick to nothing but I D A, for one thing, the districts are familiar with it. So they know every bobbing and weaving and dodging tactic there is. They're less familiar with your rights under 504 and the A D A. They don't like to see a section 504 hearing. Uh, so all of that stuff is, is helpful. And it's just the same way you go around a golf course, you know, you want different clubs in your bag and it's the same thing. You want to learn the 504 and A D A statutes and use them vigorously.
Okay, good. So there's, so if you ask for an I E P meeting, or I guess it would be a 504 meeting then? And that's what you're saying?
You can ask for a meeting. You can just tell them, look, the kid's entitled to this. The kid is, the kid is being impeded here. He can't, he can't access the curriculum because he needs vision therapy or he needs, he needs auditory work to straighten out his auditory processing problem. He's being denied equal access to the curriculum because he's not able to do that. So I want you, you know, let's see if you can go ahead and do those things. And so you pursue it that way. Uh, it's not like, you, one thing you want to remember is an I E P is one thing. An I E P defines what the kid is entitled to, provided you, they reached it procedurally right and is substantively, okay. The I E P defines what the kid is entitled to. The 504 plan is nothing like that. The 504 plan is merely the district's notes on what they're going to do to comply with the statute. There's nothing in the statute, there's nothing in the regulations that talks about a 504 plan. When you go to I D A, there's plenty in the I D A about the, the I E P because the I E P is basically the centerpiece of a statute. That's completely different from 504 and A D A. There are superficial resemblances, but they aren't the same thing. So you don't talk about a 504 plan. You say, look, this is what the statute entitles the kid to.
Okay, the statute, okay, I get it. Yeah, okay. So you just use the statute, okay?
And the regs.
Yeah. So, and so, and, and you're, and so there's no timeline for the statute under 504 and that they just have to do it immediately? That's what you're saying?
Well, there's a, I D A is good because it's got all kinds of different procedural safeguards like I E S and they got to give you P W N and all that kind of stuff. So you definitely want to use I D A for the procedural safeguard. But as far as the stuff that you're entitled to, the statutes are pretty similar.
Uh huh, okay. I see. Does anybody have a question about, about what we just said? You guys are good?
I have a question, hold on. I have a child in a private school who, they were not getting the services done in the I E P. So they, they were in a public school, they weren't getting the services done. So they moved them to a private school. So some of the accommodations they couldn't get.
Or the services, only the, the comp services. I'm sorry, you guys. Okay, so I have a child, he's, he's in my class right now. He though is autistic. He has a one-on-one in the I E P for comp services or, you know, services that should have been given to him. Now, because this is extending, my classroom is not an adequate placement for him. The, the parents know that, the school knows that, the private school knows it, but the parent is happier with the child in my class because they felt he was getting more, um, he was getting worse at the pub. They just weren't doing an adequate I E P to keep the boy happy. They were sending him home. He was having flares and issues. So they put him here until they figured out what, how to proceed with the I E P. My worry now is that he's not enrolled in the private school and he needs these services. How would we get these services? Is there a way to drop him from the private school and enroll him into the public school system so that he could get these services back?
Well, we need to know some details here. How is the kid in the private school? If the kid is not enrolled in the private school, he's still sitting in the private school, how is he there? If the district placed him there, then the district is answerable to make things happen.
No, he, he, he was in a public school and the district gave him an I E P but was not complying with it. The mom got an advocate and so when they filed the complaint, he did get comp services because I guess they were found out of compliance.
All right, did they get a, did they get a settlement agreement or something?
They did. So the comp, the, the ser- the services that he was supposed to get was they were going to add a one-on-one so many hours for the new school year. They were going to, uh, I think they were also giving him services outside of the, and then they added services to the I E P. The problem is when he was going to school, then he was having breakdowns and she felt the school was retaliating against him.
No, so I'm shocked. Okay, well, it's going to depend on what the settlement agreement says and what can be enforced in the settlement agreement. If I was going to say anything sensible, I'd have to see the sensible, I'd have to see the settlement agreement, what they've done or what they haven't done.
Yeah, that's a really hard question to answer.
Which is no problem. It's impossible to answer without the settlement agreement with the settlement agreement in front of us.
Actually, not knowing much, but the part of, they're not, the, the comp services said something, they should be giving it to him. So even though he's at the one, he's at the private school, he should technically have the one-on-one at the private school because it's a compens, it's a comp service written in the agreement. But again, that's mom's job to file the complaint or do what she wants. My concern is this, now that we're doing distant learning, there's, there's, in the classroom, it's not an appropriate placement for mom. I told her not, but emotional wellbeing, she feels that he's being damaged at the public school. She's going to keep him here until she figures that out. So I was okay with that and I can help him with prompting him, getting him to do his math, his English, try the best I can at the private school. Doing virtual learning, he is not learning nothing. I can't get him on Discord, I can't teach him to do what he needs to do, I can't prompt him. So the concern is the mom is planning on enrolling him in our school next year. And I told her, this is something that may last till the next school year. I believe that September comes around, October, we need to plan that. This is going to be the new, the new, new. And so therefore, I don't, helping him, I need to, to have the responsibility be put back on the public school and we can only do that if he's enrolled in a public school.
Well, it all depends on the settlement agreement. The responsibility is with the public school. If the public school said, we're going to put him in here and we're going to serve him in the private school.
They won't, they're not agreeing to that. They feel that theirs is the best placement for him and that.
Well, I don't care what they feel about, I don't care about anybody's feelings, not even my own. Right now, I'm interested in what does the settlement agreement say? Have you seen the settlement agreement?
Okay, I did see the one settlement agreement when she came to the school, which I, I thought was pretty bad just as an outsider, but there's nothing I can do because she signed it already. So at that point, there's nothing. But what I did tell her.
They have to adhere to it. They, you can't change it.
So I said, you know what? When you bring your son to my school because you are worried about your son being at the public school, that's a complaint in itself. And the proof you have, you can turn around and file another complaint for that, not for the past issues, but for the previous. But I'm not an advocate. So all I told her is, as of this year, the settlement said that he should have a one-on-one bell to bell. And the settlement doesn't say only if he's in the public school. The I E P is not giving him the S K I. The settlement was giving him the S K I. So I said, as of now, they're out of compliance with the settlement because they're not providing it to you.
That's probably true. We understand, we just really don't know how to answer you sensibly without seeing that settlement agreement. I look at settlement agreements all day long and, and, and everything, and I can work with it when I got to, when I see what it is. But being told in general what somebody thinks it is, that dog won't hunt. We got to see the settlement agreement and know what to do about it.
Yeah, that mom needs to consult with an advocate or an.
She has an advocate, yeah. Right now, she has an advocate and, but, but her mom is, the mom is more worried about the emotional wellbeing of, oh, he's protected, I trust the teacher, I trust the students. And, but my concern as a teacher, as an educator is, he's, he, I can't teach them virtually. And so like.
And you have to just bring that up at the I E P meeting and say that, you know, that, so now it's upon the private school's responsibility to address his behavior through a psychologist and is there a behavior intervention plan in place? They need to look at maybe a functional.
Well, it said that the private school in itself does not owe anything at all under I D A. They owe things under 504 and they owe things under the A D A. You might be able to work something along that line depending on what it is. But as far as special ed and related services are concerned, uh, whatever it is they're entitled to, they're not entitled to it under I D A. Private schools just don't have any obligation.
I shouldn't, I mean, the district, I shouldn't have said private school. The district should be addressing his behavior then because if, because the district's still responsible.
Yeah, and that's what mine is just more like, they, they have some responsibility. We did do the I E P. It's very known that my placement is not the best placement for him, though I understand the mom's concerns. I told her, this is just showing that they're obviously not offering him F A P. And so at this point, she does have an advocate who the mom, I guess the mom trusts, but I just, because he's still with me and he's been with me this school year, the concern is when he's with me, if his emotional being is better, his academics, his fast forward scores are.
Well, we need the settlement agreement before we need, before we can know what to do about this. It's just impossible. It's like telling, telling a mechanic to fix the car if you don't bring it in the garage. I mean, you got to see the car.
Does that make sense? So that is, okay, so at my point, it would just be saying, do I encourage the parent to enroll them back in the public school so that they're held accountable? They don't want to take responsibility no matter what, whether he's enrolled or whether.
The district's held accountable even if they're, when they're in the public school. They're always, they're always the ones that are held accountable. And they can't break the settlement agreement if it says for so long that he'll be.
Yes.
It comes down to the settlement agreement. If you're, take the settlement agreement away. You got a vanilla, you got a vanilla situation with no settlement agreement. If you enroll your kid in a private school, the kid doesn't owe you any, the district doesn't owe you anything unless you give them notice, well, you know, you're not offering me F A P, so I'm putting him here and I expect to send you the bill. And then you can litigate that, you know, that's okay. If you don't have a settlement agreement. Here, you got a settlement agreement.
Yes. Not for the school, but for the one-on-one, not for the school. That was her.
Well, I don't know what's in there.
Yeah. So let's move on to another question because we, we, I'm, we, you know, we'd love to help you, but we really can't because we don't know what the settlement agreement says. So it's really, you know, just too hard to have that conversation.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. So let me, I'm looking at a, a question. Can you, um, can you believe my I E P meeting for review a visual processing I E E and guessed what the I E E evaluator hasn't been in contact by the district with details for me? I don't, I, who, who asked that question? Because I'm not really understanding what you said. Um, Mara? Something about your I E E and you have an I E P tomorrow, you're saying? Something about your IEE and you have an IEP tomorrow, you're saying? Your meeting's tomorrow, and you have an IEE evaluator, but hasn't been contacted by the district? Is Mara here? Mara?
I see Mara's iPhone here on the lower right.
Do you want to clarify your question, Mara?
You're muted.
I'm sorry, guys, I have to leave to help my son in the restroom. Okay, so, so what was that?
What was your question? I was reading your question, but I didn't quite understand it.
Oh, which one? I have two.
Oh, the one about you're having an IEP meeting tomorrow and something about your IEE?
Yes, so I'm having an IEP meeting tomorrow to review an IEE for visual processing, and I found out that the district has in contact the evaluator to let them know, to let him know the time and to give them the, the code and their phone number to call. So I asked them a couple times to do that, and to the, actually to the coordinator of a special ed, and they haven't contacted him. So I said that on my own, but I wanted to see how I, how can I proceed with this?
Well, here's one thing you need to remember, which you can see if you look at 300.502, which is the IE reg. The assessment is yours. It says in there, if you lose a due process, if they fight you and you lose a due process, you're still entitled to an independent evaluation, but not at public expense. So if you lose a hearing, you lose the right to make them pay. But if you win a hearing, they don't all of a sudden get that it's their IEE just because they funded it. It's still your assessment, the same way that if I hit your car, it's still your car. I don't gain an interest in your car because I paid for the damage. And if, so if they pay for an IE, get it between your ears that this is your assessment and this is your assessor. And you don't leave it up to the district to contact the assessor because then they just drag their feet and they can forget to do things and all sorts of stuff. You work with the assessor and you make sure that everything is up to date and well has the district gotten in touch with you? They giving you any problems? And they let you know that the, that the meeting is actually happening? And so this, you remember at all times that this assessor is yours, not the district's. And you take it from there. So if you've spoken to the assessor and arranged to have the assessor come to the meeting, because you have every right to bring the assessor to the meeting.
Yes.
Right, yes, I did, I did contact, contact him and let him know. I was just wanting to know, because one time I, I, I did the same with a different assessor. I let him know about the timing date, and then the district responded back and say that I was not entitled to do that, that the program specialist is the one that contacts, and, and that's all the information with the IE evaluator.
Well, that's bullshit. It's your assessment. You have every right to talk to your assessor. They lie.
So did you, is it on the, is it on the IEP invitation? Is your assessor's name on the IEP invitation?
It was not in the first invitation, and I, and I emailed back and I say, okay, I, I, my understanding was this IEP was to review his, his evaluation. So they, they say, oh, yeah, we forgot. So they, they put him back on the invitation.
So his name's on the IEP invitation now for the second one? So that means he should have been invited, and that's a violation because he's an attendee, and that's the purpose of the meeting. So, yeah, you kind of have him over a barrel.
And you make sure that the guy gets there. If he can't get there because they gave too short notice, then you're just going to have to reschedule the meeting.
Yeah, then why would you go if the, if the assessor's not there?
Yeah, I think what we're trying to do is to come up with other information to this meeting. I requested a different meeting for, to complete an IEP document that we need, that we were in process before everything happened. And they say that they don't have any more meetings, that they have over, I don't know, a thousand meetings to take care of, and they don't... And I requested this back in March and back again in April. And I said, you know, I really need two meetings, either we're in the same week or we're in the same timeframe. But they said, we're not giving any more meetings, and the longer, as I say, okay, can we extend this meeting instead of an hour and thirty minutes to, I don't know, four hours, three hours? And they say, oh, the max time of, a max time that we're scheduling meetings is an hour and a half because of COVID-19. I was told this by the coordinator today, this morning.
So you have the right to ask for an IEP anytime, and they have to give it to you within, are you in California?
Yes.
So within thirty days, they have to give you a meeting? They can't use COVID-19 as an excuse?
Well, especially if the reason that you need another meeting is because they didn't bring the assessor to the meeting.
Yep. Because your timeline for your assessment is going to, well, timelines have been relaxed, so you might be able to get away with that. But, yeah. You still have...
Well, there's no IE timeline anyway, because it's not a district assessment. That 60A is only a blessing, their assessment.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I was just trying to see how I can email back and say, okay, so I, I requested this meeting ahead of time, and I really need to have this meeting before the school year is over.
All right, let me say a couple of things. The first thing is, you make sure that that assessor is at the meeting. You talk to the assessor and make sure that they're signed on to the meeting. The second thing is, are you recording the meeting?
Yes, I let them know about that, I'm recording.
All right, good. So you're going to record the meeting, so then, and you go ahead and let them talk nonsense in the meeting. If they want to say, oh, well, we can't talk to the assessor, or who knows what kind of crap they're going to say?
Exactly.
You want to collect it on the recorder so that, you know, this way it can be played.
Right.
Now, they're not going to want to do anything that the assessor says probably anyway. So basically, it's going to be exercise and seeing what they can do to screw up so that you can take advantage of it. They don't want, they don't want to do it, or else they wouldn't be doing everything they can to avoid considering the, the thing. Who's the assessor, by the way?
I don't know if I can say it in Zoom, I don't want to...
Wait a minute, how can you not know who the assessor is if it's an IE?
I know, I know the name. I just don't know if I can bring it up, because I don't know who the rest of the attendees is. I don't want to compromise him.
Why are you compromising him?
It's Dr. Steffi, but I haven't spoke to him.
Oh, good.
Good, well, he's good.
That's your favorite one, Peter.
That's right.
Yeah, I know. So, yeah, I did, I spoke to him and I let him know, you know, and, and I even, you know, I let him know that what's going on. So he's going to be there tomorrow, even though it's not short notice, like you just mentioned.
Well, if he's going to be there, then that's okay. And then you make sure that they don't bully you and push you around and stuff like that. What are they going to do? Hit you with a rubber hose? I mean, you just stand up for your rights and make sure that he gets, the thing gets considered.
I have something really quick in regards to recording.
Yes.
How can we record the IEP meeting if legally we're not supposed to video record with the Zoom? So how do we audio record?
Well, the most elegant way to do it, I suppose, is you just put your cellphone next to the, next to your speaker and pick it up that way. That works.
Yeah. Yeah, you still get to record. It's, it's the same laws in effect where you, where parents can record. So just do it the same way you always do it, on your phone. Just put it up next to your computer and audio record it.
Thank you so much. I was just wasn't sure how, because this is so confusing nowadays.
Yes, sure, no problem. Yeah, absolutely. I'm glad you brought that up, Peter. I had it on my list and I didn't say it. Now, it more than ever is so important to record your meetings, these virtual meetings, because, you know, who knows what's going to happen on these virtual meetings they're having? So, okay, we have another question. Our district ignored our annual meeting and sent a letter after the fact saying they will wait till after school reopens. However, they will go ahead and do a transitional meeting. So again, annual timelines have not been waived, and so they're violating the annual timeline by not having the annual meeting. Now, I know, and if they, if you got a PWN, then that's even a stronger compliance complaint, because right there in black and white, they are saying, we're going to ignore the annual timeline and we're not going to give it to you. So I would respond with an email saying, I'm absolutely requesting that my annual be conducted and on or before the due date. And, and that, and that's my request, and that's what I want. And when you have your transition, whenever that's supposed to be, it's your annual. It's your annual and the transition, because they cannot deny you your annual because of COVID. It's just simple fact, they can't do that. Okay? Let's see what else. I asked for an IEP two weeks ago. I received a document saying that I do not, I do not respond to the document. They will not hold the IEP. I already contacted them two weeks ago. Yes, so you have to contact them again. I know what you're saying, Liz, because that's exactly what I'm experiencing with this district that we're talking about. And they're sending out these PWNs saying, nope, we're going to waive the IEP until we get back. Can't do it. So, and I, and I asked, I requested them last month in April, about ten IEPs, and they, and each, slowly but surely, each parent got a PWN saying, nope, not going to do it. And then they said this little sentence, but if you disagree with this, just let us know. And so I let them know. I'm going back to my April twenty-third request that, yeah, we want it, and we still want it. And so that's what I did. So just respond and say, yes, I absolutely want it. And if you had a written request before, say, I'm, it's not that now you're asking for it on this date. No, you go back to that date that you already requested it, plus there's the annual due date anyway. So, all right.
You know, it might need a systemic compliance complaint to CDE if they're doing this to everybody.
They are.
And you go ahead and send the note into CD saying, look, they're just saying that they're going to violate the law unless you tell them not to, and you can ask CDE to do something about that, and maybe CD will.
Oh, yeah, I'm going to write a whole slew of them. I'm, I'm gonna, it's going to take me a long time, but I think I can do a boilerplate one because it's all about the same.
Like in the blinds.
Yeah, yeah, they're going to be real happy when that happens, but it, it's just insane. It's ridiculous. It's unbelievable.
It's almost like this. You can't make this stuff up.
No, uh-uh, no.
I'm sorry. It's Mara, I have one more question regarding my IE for visual processing. How long does the district have in order to say yes or no, make a decision? And, and, and what the evaluator is recommending for the student? Do they have like a timeframe that they need to respond? It's supposed to be a discussion, but it's generally not like that, so do they have...
It's a little vague, but they got to have, basically, they got to give you, they have to give you a PWN saying what they're going to do or not do and everything, and why they're doing or not doing it within a couple of weeks. And that's what it is. They're going to tell you this or that. They're going to refuse to do what he says, almost certainly. So they'll go ahead and do that. You collect that on the recorder. You see what evidence there is that they predetermined it. And then you tell them, well, since you're refusing to do these things, when am I going to see your PWN?
Okay, so, okay, but there's no like...
And the PWN is probably not going to be adequate. So then you'll have a procedural violation, which you can use there, because they didn't, they didn't give you a proper PWN.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Good, good. Okay, guys, well, it's, we're at the top of the hour, so we, we've gone an hour. I like to respect everybody's time, because we, I like to do this for about an hour. And I want to thank Peter for being here tonight. It was awesome having you here and having your input. And I want to remind everyone of coming to the webinar on Friday or Monday. And, I'm sorry, it's not Monday, it's this Friday or next Tuesday. And if you go to my Advocates for Angels Facebook page, you'll see the, the information there, and you need to register. So please register for the webinar. And every Wednesday night, I have these town hall meetings. And I also have, I offer a, more of a kind of an emotional, social group for parents to just talk about what they're experiencing during this time. It's not so much focused on the law, it's just focused on parents, especially these children, getting together because we have the same common ground. We're probably dealing with a lot of the same things, and who do we have to talk to about that, right? So it's kind of a, that kind of a Zoom meeting. It's called net friending, and it's, my girlfriend, April Roga, is doing that. And that's also on my Facebook page, if you'd like to join that. We'd love to have you there. And thank you, guys, for all the input and, and the contributions and everyone, the conversation. I'm glad you all came, and I hope to see you on the webinar on, on Friday, and hopefully on the town hall next week as well.
I have one last question for Mr. Peter.
Okay.
I'm here.
Okay, so I am now just, I've had my, I have four kids.
I'm not hearing you well.
Yeah, we can't hear you very well.
I have an IEP for seven years now.
Can you hear us? Joanna, Joanna, can you hear us?
The service?
We can't hear you.
Better?
It's really hopeless. Can you hear us? No.
Okay, that's better now. That's better now.
Well, let's try it again.
Hello?